Call to all in the town of Prescott Valley, work-study session, January 2nd, 2020. Happy New Year, everyone. Let's get right to it. Please call the vote, or I'm sorry, please call, roll.
Roll call. Councilmember Marty Grossman?
I'm here.
Councilmember Lori Hahn?
Here.
Councilmember Rick Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Don Packard?
Present.
Councilmember Kendall Schumacher?
Here.
Vice Mayor Laura Linai?
Glad to be here.
Mayor Kalpol Gudin?
Present.
We have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Move right on to this economic update. Mr. Tarkowski, floor is yours.
Mayor and council, if you'll recall, one of the comments that was made and requests made at our November council staff retreat was that you would begin getting quarterly reports at a council meeting from the three legs of our economic development effort. Those three legs are the Prescott Valley Chamber of Commerce, Prescott Valley Economic Development Foundation, and our own in-house economic developer, Ben Hooper. Now, each one of those legs is responsible for a different phase of economic development, and tonight you will be hearing from two of those. Michael Paredes, Director of Prescott Valley Economic Development Foundation, is unable to be with us this evening. As soon as he is able, he will be back to speak to you at a work-study meeting. So with that, you have the Chamber of Commerce, Marnie Ull, with her presentation. Thank you, Marnie.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and councilmembers, before you, I did give a more involved report, a written report, on the things that, basically, I took the whole year and put it into perspective. But we've been before you many, many times, so a lot of things you've either attended, been heard of, been a part of, but that's all of it in a nutshell. Also, the supplemental documentation is just about every newspaper article, every ad, all of the other work that we do as part of our ongoing program of work, press releases, things like that, articles that we write for magazines. But I'll just give you a kind of an overview of what's been going on recently, and then what we look at in 2020. I'm going to start off with Valley of Lights, because that's one of our biggest events that we do as part of our contract with the Town of Prescott Valley. We were really thrilled this year to have an exciting year. It started, opened on Thanksgiving, which was November the 28th, and the first thing we did was have one of our tunnels blow down. So we lost the Holly Tunnel, could not be repaired in time to put it back up for the season, and now we do have, obviously, insurance, and we're going through the process of seeing what will be covered in order to bring that tunnel back. It's one of the most iconic tunnels, because that always seems like Valley of Lights, and then you see the Holly Tunnel. A lot of people are disappointed that it wasn't there, but there's just nothing we can do about it. So that was Thanksgiving night. Gloria Gross, from my office, and her family worked at every Thanksgiving night, and it was quite a nasty night with wind and rain, but we still had, you know, quite a bit of attendance. Then we closed, then Friday night, we had the snow, Thursday night into Friday, and we had to close first night, and so we weren't able to open it due to the conditions of the roadway. So that was, I was not thinking this is going to be a good year. It was not going well. But the rest of the year went well. We were able to be open every night. We held the stroll, which is where we close it to all vehicular traffic, on December the 6th, which is a Tuesday, and we had approximately 2,800 attendees. And we always say "approximately" because some people walk halfway through and walk back, or they don't get counted, because there's so many people going through, or there's little ones with their families. But again, about 2,800 attendees. The largest night for cars was 943 cars on one evening, and that was December 21st. When I look back, we had three nights with over 800 cars, and one night with over 700 cars. Total car count was 15,581, which averages about 503 cars per night. Now, I will mention that Councilwoman Grossman worked the Valley of Lights as a volunteer a couple of nights, and four nights, bless your heart. I was out there, you know what it's like. It's almost the first two hours, it's nonstop, people driving through, and then it slows up a little bit, a little bit throughout the evening. But that's still, when you think of 503 cars average every night driving through Valley of Lights, that's why it's so important for us to maintain it. This year, we had a new display. It was the Fire Breathing Dragon, that was located near Cinderella's Castle, and we renovated three displays. At the 20-year mark, we know that in order to keep Valley of Lights viable, interesting, people coming back, now, we always had new displays, we always maintained it and upkeeped it, but we didn't renovate anything, and a lot of this space are looking a little aged. So we did some investment, and we renovated three displays. The Snowflake Tunnel, which was phenomenal, this is all with LED lighting, and they have to be completely torn down and then rewired for the lighting. The Western Village, which is the mercantile that sat down off of the side of the roadway, but beautifully lit, and then the roadway lighting was completed throughout the park, so from the beginning to the end, the whole roadway was lit. And then we installed security cameras with signage of video surveillance because of the vandalism we had last year that we made the investment, and we worked with partners at Caltechs and Bolt Internet to set up video surveillance that was 24/7, and then also we had stable cameras that motion detected that took pictures. But we had no disruption, other than a couple deer that walked through, and that's most of the damage, was deer or the bull. And then this year, we also added music for the stroll. We purchased some speakers, and then with iPod phones, had beautiful music, and if you walked through it, it made entirely a big difference, having a very festive atmosphere out there. On the left-hand picture is one of the families from the stroll, and then on the right, you see the remnants of the Holly Tunnel from the day after Thanksgiving. So, but all in all, it was a very successful Valley of Lights. Next year, we're looking at renovating the Candy Cane Tunnel, and then also the sign out in front that says Valley of Lights Open. And that's been there 20 years, and it's not been redone, and it needs to be redone. And I've worked it several times, and I tend to always not get there before it opens, so I've driven through it probably 20 times myself, and now I look at it, what needs to be done, instead of how beautiful it is. But people still love it, and we received so many compliments, and it is just very much the Christmas and holiday destination for Prescott Valley, and still appeals and wows people at Valley of Lights. So it was a good year. And again, it was a little bit later, because Thanksgiving was a little bit later, so we did lose about five, six days that we would normally have on a car count, but that's what happens. Okay, and let's see. Highlights for 2019, we'll go back. This year, we celebrated our 45th anniversary. We added events or programs for each month of the year in celebration of the 45th, so whether it was a president-chairman's luncheon, we gathered past presidents and chairman of the board of directors, or whether it was starting a new program, such as our Women's Business Connection, we had something different every month, in addition to our regular programs of quarterly breakfast, business-after-hours mixers, and all of the programs that we normally do. We received designation as official Arizona Visitor Information Center from the Arizona Office of Tourism back in March or April of 2019. That was a, that was a application process, and you had to meet certain criteria, and then you're included in all of their Arizona Office of Tourism information, and then we've got signage, and we had hats and shirts that they gave us. We recently, this, well, back in July, we acquired the 29 square foot of additional office space for our chamber expansion. That's the old NFP offices. They consolidated their offices into Prescott, and enabled us to look at the possibility of expanding, and we have, were actually, there was no place for us to grow in our building, to do anything more, so we went ahead and worked with Coiman, and took care of, and we popped through the wall and opened up, so we have a larger boardroom, member space usage for trainings. Future plans include a member-to-member interactive kiosk, as well as promotional utilization on community events, what we've got going on. People can copy them, print them off, it'll be a kiosk, and that's our partner, is Yavapai College. Also promoting activities, events, and then also the production of the new Welcome Bags, the Welcome Home program we're starting. So that's, that's, there's a new office space. The top upper-left is where we built through the wall, there was the wall there, that looks towards the north side, which is colder, by the way, on that side of the building, I have to say. The center part is the lobby looking towards my office. The upper-right is the boardroom. We have smart TVs in there, we received a grant that will have them networked and be able to use for training and educational purposes, especially for our business academy, but also for anyone use, our board members, using at board meetings. The lobby on the lower-left is the doors leading into it, we put 12-foot ceilings up to make it look larger, and then the lower-right is towards the restroom, handicap accessible, and then the copy machine and workstation. So that's kind of exciting. We'll be having Mixer and Open House on January the 15th at that space, so we'll be hosting it along with asphalt paving and supply to officially open it to let everybody know and see it. We always like to know visitor statistics, so throughout the year, we had 1,578 visitors. We always ask, are you new to the area? Are you moving here, planning to move here? Of those asked, 72 of them said, "I recently moved here, and I'm here to get a phone book", or what other information they want about the community. And then 91 people said they were planning on relocating, and were looking for relocation information. And as a matter of fact, I had somebody visit today to pick up information, that was currently living in the Hampton Inn, waiting for their furniture to be delivered to their new house in Stone Ridge. So we get a lot of that. We had 33 international visitors, and we mailed out 98 relocation packages to people that are requesting information. Those relocation packages are sent out at no charge, they're really sponsored by those businesses that want to put information in it, so they're actually advertiser-sponsored, so we don't have to ask the person requesting the information for money, and they always seem to appreciate that. Look at 2020, we're going to apply for reaccreditation with the US Chamber, it's a five-year program. We received it in 2015, it's time to reapply. We're working on Gold Fever Days. As we talked about before, the band concert, we're tentatively calling Rhythm &amp; Brew, bringing in craft beers and food, and building it up, and having a, having a highlight, band. They're going to conduct a business retention expansive survey, we're working with Ben and Mike, and Yavapai College to make that happen. Each one of us will be surveying our particular membership base, Ben with the hospitality and retail, and then us with our members, smaller businesses, and then Mike with his larger corporate and manufacturing businesses. Yavapai College is working, and will provide the backside of it for the funding and the report, so they'll be putting together the information for us. We're going to work with the Prescott Valley Police Department to support and enhance the current Puente de la Comunidad event. Do I have too many ins in there? Anyway, spell-checked on a Spanish word. So we're working on that, that'll be in September, October, and again, that's to enhance that event, to make it more community-wide, and involve the business community to get behind it and support it in our Hispanic and Latino community. In November, we're going to host a Veteran-Owned Business Expo, or Bixer, and that is to, again, showcase our veteran-owned businesses, and an opportunity for them to get out in front of the community. And then we're hiring an additional staff member, going through an inter-grain process now, which is probably the hardest thing I've ever done, especially during the holidays, when nobody's available. And then we'll continue with our established program of work, events, activities, and everything that we've already do, we'll continue with those programs, too. As I said, there's a more detailed information in the book, but a couple of highlights is, one of the things that many people don't know, is our connecting and promoting the community, and the fact that we host a radio show every week that comes on Saturdays at 7:00 a.m. on Magic 99.1. We host a bi-weekly radio show, Talk of the Town, Prescott Valley. Obviously, we do two weeks, the mayor has the show one week, and then Superintendent Streeter has the show, so every Tuesday, it's Prescott Valley-focused. Then we have the two cable TV shows, Hot Topics, it's currently being, the content's being updated to change it up, to make it more interactive and interesting, and focus on getting outside of just the studio, and looking at what do we have as assets in Prescott Valley, and visiting them. And then Community Connections is a bi-weekly show that's on, that's really event-driven, pretty much Hope is a regular on it, Hope Hooper with Parks and Recreation is a regular, because there's so many things going on, but we're always promoting community events. And I will say that I have been promoting the Polar Bear Splash, and the fact that the mayor and the police chief were going to jump, so just to let you know.
Shout out to the chief right back there.
Just so you know, yes, you know. So they're talking, I'm talking about it on Saturday's morning show. So, I mean, and then I also write a lot, write, and I do for Prescott Area Living Magazine every other month, I have a story in editorial, a monthly column for Volson Valley News, and the Prescott Country Club News, and then also for Prescott Women Magazine, when they're requested information, I send that off. And one more highlight. Oh, and we hosted seven ribbon cuttings, we're supporting new businesses, and we had a new member join today, a real estate gentleman who lives in Stone Ridge, but has his business, and he's joined the chamber, so that was our first one for 2020. So, that's it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Do you have any questions?
Thank you, this was awesome. It's a great way to start the year, I appreciate that. And I particularly appreciated Valley of Lights, the walkthrough night, it was really good, although it wasn't cold enough, but I know you didn't want it that cold. On your first nighttime mixer night, we have a budget meeting, so I won't be able to attend that, and I apologize.
On the 15th, on a Wednesday?
Yeah. It's one of our community budget nights in Proghorn.
You just come over and visit anytime.
If anybody's from Proghorn, we're doing the 17th in your location. And can you tell me, and if you can't, that's okay, how many home base members you have?
There's not a large amount, but we do have probably, I would say, a dozen that I can think of right off the top of my head and give you names for, but I'm sure that there are more, they come across my desk, and they don't have storefronts, but they do.
Do you market to them as members?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes.
Awesome, thank you again.
Because that's the value of being, getting your name out. I think one of the things about being in a chamber is your community connection, and how do you get people to come in your doors, and how do you get your business name out there, and especially somebody that's a home-based business that's not visible. That's the best way, and a lot of it's through the networking opportunities, or advertising, sponsorship promotion, those kinds of opportunities.
Thank you.
Ms. Marnie, I want to tell you how important this report is. Over the years, we always have the uninformed or ill-informed citizens that attack we members about the funding of the chamber. This is the report I use to educate them, and hopefully turn them around. And I'd like to say, over the years, this report has improved so much that it makes my job a lot easier, so I really want to thank you for it. I've gone an entire year, and no one challenged me. Think about that.
We value that relationship and understand our commitment, so do not take that lightly.
I believe we're also going to be working on 2020, a welcome packet for people that relocate, that don't come to your office, correct? That will be coming through.
Right, that's the welcome, we're kind of calling it Welcome Home.
Okay.
Yeah.
Through our utilities department, when they come to sign up for water, they'll be getting this packet as well.
They're going to get a card that refers them to come to the chamber, because we had discussed the logistics of stuffing, you know, bags of stuff in some corner in somebody's office, whereas if it's, here you are, and it's a beautiful card that says, "Welcome home, Prescott Valley."
Gotcha. That would work out great.
That's first on my list.
Awesome. Thank you, ma'am. Nothing else, Mr. Tarkowski, who's next.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mayor and council, I think Ben Hooper sent somebody else here this evening, because I've never seen him dressed up like that.
Looked a little different earlier today, right? Mayor, council, before I get started, I don't appear before you too often, and so I just wanted to thank you for the opportunity to share some of the work that I've done through 2019, what I have going on in 2020, and to be able to share that in this work-study session, I appreciate that. I take notes, because, you know, might surprise you, but sometimes I go off on a little tangent if I don't keep myself on task, so. All right, so we had several new retail and commercial entities join the Town of Prescott Valley business community during 2019. This list is absolutely not intended to be all-inclusive by any means. In fact, we had 48 new restaurants or retail establishments join our business community this year, but rather, I'm highlighting seven that are highly visible, new businesses that opened in 2019, and each one representing a little bit of a different point that I'd like to make during the presentation this evening. So number one, Pruitt's Fine Furniture opened back in March. They backfilled 110,000-square-foot former Kmart facility, which is absolutely unusual in today's retail landscape. I like to call these businesses unicorns, because they're almost unbelievable to be able to backfill this much space. Reports that I have gotten from Pruitt's are that sales are exceeding their expectations since their March open, which is absolutely phenomenal to hear that feedback. And then the introduction of Pruitt's into the community also opened up some development opportunities within that expansive former Kmart parking, as the demands that Kmart had, you know, far exceed what Pruitt's will need. Ocean Blue Car Wash, I included this business both because it's an example of a new build, I'll talk about that on a different note, but also because it's a business that a lot of folks in the community have asked me about specifically. I've been asked a number of times the verbatim question, "How many car washes do we need in the town?" And the answer that I give to that is the same that I would give insert whatever business in for car wash, and that's as many as our local market can support. You know, that's what those businesses do their due diligence before coming into the community and figuring out if this community can support them. And I have a lot of faith in our private sector community that they don't put that type of investment in lightly. Mattress America, I included this one, they backfilled a space that was vacated by Aaron's, which is a furniture, electronics rental-type business. They vacated their space over in the Fry's Marketplace, and Mattress America backfilled it. This is just a great example of when one store leaves, there's many times another one coming in. Also, what I'd like to highlight on this is that a great deal of new businesses that are coming in are looking for square footage in the range of 1,500 to 10,000 square feet. Most of our vacancies right now in town, with the exception of the Sam's Club, which I'll touch on later, are less than 1,500 square feet, so we have a very low commercial vacancy rate in town. Arizona Downs, we've talked about Arizona Downs, you know, in multiple settings over the years, so I won't get too much into it, except to say that I believe continued horse racing in Prescott Valley can be a major economic driver for our community, and I'm very happy that Arizona Downs has reopened this past year. Duncan and Baskin Robbins, this is an example of a new build, which quite frankly is a little bit difficult in today's current market. To be honest, I kind of would like to see a little bit of a market correction, nothing jarring, but a little bit of a market correction in 2020 to see some of these labor and material costs start to come down out of the stratosphere, and it'll make new builds a little bit more feasible again. But I would say that despite the cost of construction being a challenge, Duncan and Baskin Robbins is an example that for the right business, it can be done. And the same goes for Mod Pizza, which opened. But really, what I wanted to highlight with Mod Pizza is that it's an example of a successful, again, they've reported numbers that are exceeding their expectations thus far, and this is an example of a successful multi-unit, fast casual restaurant in Prescott Valley. I've said this many times before, and it really isn't meant to be an insult, retailers are not innovators, so they'll usually look to see what other stores are doing in the market first, before they determine whether or not they'd like to follow suit. So being able to have one and hang our hat just to demonstrate that you can do well in Prescott Valley with a fast casual concept, that I believe will help to attract more, and these fast casual concepts are kind of what's hot in the restaurant industry at the moment. And the last business I'd like to highlight is the Flowerstone Cafe. I included these folks because they're, number one, a great example of a concept that does fill less than 1,500 square feet, they fit into just about 1,000 square feet, but also because it's an example of a regional entity that was already existing here in the region, and saw the economic viability of Prescott Valley, and the ability for them to increase their business. They moved up here from there. I would rather see businesses opening secondary locations in Prescott Valley, but we will also gladly take other businesses that see Prescott Valley as a place where they'd like to grow. So again, I want to talk a little bit about some of my major activities that I undertook during 2019, and again, this is not meant to be an all-inclusive list, but rather, just to highlight some of the larger projects and primary activities throughout the year. The bulk of my work is spent on exactly what it should be, the primary function of my job, which is retail recruitment. Pretty much everything that I do falls under that broad category. Each year, I've announced my push, meaning the types of businesses that I feel have the greatest demonstrated demand in the town, and therefore, I spend a little bit more time working at attracting those businesses, but certainly not to the exclusion of other retailers and other sectors. And for 2019, my push was to attract restaurants and hotels. I'll touch on the restaurants on the next slide, and I expect that my work regarding hotels will bear some fruit in 2020 that I hope to bring to you, so stay tuned on that front. So getting a little bit more specific, I spent a great deal of time through 2019 making trips down to Phoenix to meet with various brokers, developers, and direct-to-retailers. The actual number is 47, different developers, brokers, retailers, or their consultants, that I had a calendared meeting with. However, that does not include the more impromptu meetings that I took at different events, which puts the number well over 50, and so I listed 50-plus. Now, who I meet with depends on the retailer I'm chasing, so some retailers will have in-house real estate folks that I'll deal with directly, others will direct me to their broker and exclusively want me to work through their broker. Developers also have their own relationships with retailers, and it's another great avenue to explore that also gives me the opportunity to talk about potential new development opportunities in the town. Many of the brokers represent dozens of national retailers, so meeting with one broker may have touched on 10 or even 15 different potential retailers that I felt were viable in Prescott Valley, to bring the number to about 70 different national retailers that I identified through 2019. In addition to the national retailers, I also met with about seven potential end-users who are more local or regionally based, and not necessarily represented by a broker. You know, building these relationships is important, as retail strategies change, so they might tell me no when we meet, but six months from now, the retailer's strategy has changed, they might have rolled out a new concept that makes a little more sense in a rural community, and so continuing to cultivate and maintain this relationship that I've established over the past three years with many of these folks will continue throughout 2020. I want to talk a little bit about our Opportunity Zone designation. So in late 2018, I was contacted by Yavapai County, and was informed that the county had three days to identify five census tracts within the county to be submitted to Governor Ducey for his consideration as potential opportunity zones. Ultimately, the governor passed his recommendations on Ultimately, the governor passed his recommendations on to the U.S. Department of Treasury for final approval and official designation. Thankfully, part of my responsibilities is to stay up to date on a broad range of information as it pertains to my position, and as such, I had a basic understanding of Opportunity Zones, which gave me a little bit of a head start, because the county really didn't get much of a heads-up either. To be honest with you, usually I think federal economic development programs and incentives are worthless, for lack of a better word, but I do not find that to be the case with Opportunity Zones. It is a powerful tax incentive tool that has the goal of shaking loose unrealized capital gains into economically disadvantaged census tracts across the country. I nominated the census tract that comprises our Central Business District, including two of our primary retail nodes, in an area that generally runs from Navajo west to Starlight and from State Route 69 north to Long Look, Looz, and Mountain Valley Park. I chose this census tract in order to leverage the Opportunity Zone designation to accelerate development. So being designated an Opportunity Zone does not in and of itself increase the value of the land or create economic demand where demand did not previously exist. There must still be a market for that end-user. And so I chose our Central Business District census tract in hopes that it would accelerate development, as there are many commercial areas that have a demonstrated market demand. And we had at least one win on that front, which I'll talk about in a moment. I worked hard through 2019 to ensure that the property owners inside of the Opportunity Zone understood the benefits of the program to use to help market their property. As part of that effort, as well as to generate more local business interest and interest from the Phoenix market, I called Yavapai College and asked them to host an Opportunity Zone forum under their banner that would highlight Opportunity Zones throughout Yavapai County. I worked with private sector partners both locally and Phoenix-based to organize the event, and it was extremely well-attended, with more than 100 attendees. This was better attended than many of the forums that I was at in the Phoenix market, which was a great surprise. The audience was primarily realtors, landowners, wealth advisors, fund managers, and it did result in some leads and several contacts for us. One of the group I'm in active discussions with and have been for through the last about four or five months of 2019. I also joined an Opportunity Zone working group down in Phoenix and have met just a handful of times over the past year, and this group is comprised of developers, wealth managers, tax attorneys, CPAs, and others that have a... We just kind of sit and have a freewheeling discussion about what's active within our respective Opportunity Zones and how we keep things moving forward. I'm the only public sector member of this group, and I found it to be extremely valuable both in terms of contacts that I've made. Several of the group members, in fact, came up to tour our Opportunity Zone, including developers and wealth managers. But also, I've received a lot of valuable information from these folks, and, you know, free information from $400-an-hour lawyers is always a good thing, right? Our Opportunity Zone was utilized by Pruitt's and by Ocean Blue Car Wash, though both businesses had planned to come regardless, but, you know, it will help, certainly help with their bottom line. The real benefits, I believe, will be seen this year as I continue to work with Pruitt's and their broker to identify end-users for new development in the current parking lot, as well as working with the Feins. And in fact, I'm very excited to announce this evening the future addition of Alliance Hardware and Lumber as the first major business in the expansion of the Glassford Hill Marketplace that's continuing north of Walmart. So I had a gap analysis conducted using a USDA grant back in 2018, and that gap analysis identified, among many other things, lumber and hardware as an area with a lot of money being sucked down into the Phoenix market. So hopefully, the addition of Alliance will help to recapture some of those dollars locally. Additionally, Alliance was very interested in the Opportunity Zone, and they were able to close escrow before the end of the year in order to take full advantage of the Opportunity Zone benefits. For those of you who are, and which many of you are, aware of how hard it is to close a commercial escrow deal inside of 45 days, that's the kind of accelerated development that I was hoping for by having that Opportunity Zone designation. So that was excellent to see. The most value, though, for Opportunity Zone will be in 10 years from the date that they locate, and so although to maximize the benefits you needed to close by the end of 2019, we will see the Opportunity Zone be a continuing attractive marketing tool through 2020, 2021, and 2022. I've also been very active in ICSC and A-AED, both during their conferences, as well as a volunteer. I'm the... A-AED is the Arizona Association for Economic Development. It's an organization dedicated toward education, professional development, and networking for economic development professionals. I attend both the A-AED spring and fall conferences and symposiums that are located in northern Arizona that touch on my content area. So in fact, I organized a very interesting retail symposium that took place right here in Prescott Valley in 2018. It was very late in 2018. I use the conferences as an opportunity to touch base with my colleagues across the state, both rural and metro, and to find out what they have cooking with regards to retail and their respective communities. I also use it as a tool to reach out to my retail contacts and organize sessions at the conferences that touch on aspects of retail economic development. So not only do I get to then benefit from the great information that my private sector contacts give through these presentations, but it's also another opportunity for me to touch base and continue to build those relationships that I've worked so hard to build over the last three years. And while A-AED is an excellent and great group, I certainly derive a lot of benefit from... I'm more active in the International Council for Shopping Centers, which is the largest retail trade organization in the world. ICSC has several conferences throughout the year, with the most beneficial ones to myself and to our town being their flagship conference in Las Vegas, as well as a smaller, more regionally-focused conference that takes place in Southern California. Honestly, I would say these conferences are one of the most valuable things that I can do, as it allows me to meet with, either scheduled or impromptu, with dozens of retailers, brokers, and developers throughout the United States in just a day or two. Unfortunately, this year I was not able to attend the Las Vegas conference. It just, that specific conference in and of itself eats up about a quarter of my budget, and so I found that it was, my time would be better spent attending their Western Conference, which is a little bit more intimate, and because it's also more concentrated in the West, kind of filters out some of the folks that might go to Las Vegas that are expanding in New Jersey but have no interest in Arizona. That was an excellent conference. And then in addition to attending the conferences, I volunteer with ICSC. I'm the only public sector member in the state of Arizona to sit on their leadership team. I'm the public sector co-chair of the P3 Committee, which seeks to find creative and professionally beneficial ways for the private sector, retail sector, to interface with the public sector, all with the goal of moving deals forward in our respective communities. I've obtained invaluable contacts and access through this volunteer position. It's also given me yet another platform to talk with private sector folks about Prescott Valley and the economic opportunities that we have to offer new retailers. I worked with the ICSC team to host an event in Phoenix in October that was very well-received and hoped to do another similar event or larger in 2020. In late 2018, again, using grant money, I was able to roll out a new retail-oriented economic development website. If you have not done so yet, I would encourage you to check out ed.pvaz.net. And it's still a little bit of work in progress, as I'm not really a tech guy. I mean, I can get the PowerPoint started, but past that, it's been a little bit of a learning curve, but I think I've got a lot of the kinks worked out through 2019. In addition to providing information through that website, I've also done a blog post, which I believe has been well-received. And while the deal has yet to close, I do feel confidence that at least one of those blog posts, which was emailed to somebody in my network, who then emailed it to a developer in his network, who are now looking to do a deal in town. Again, hopefully, I'll have something on that to report to you in 2020. Also, some major activities, new business support, this is pretty fluid. It's been utilized by some businesses coming into town that ask me for help with various things, but to be quite frank, our community development department is excellent, and they are customer-focused, and there's not usually a whole lot that I need to do once I've gotten them in the door, but I'm more than happy to assist folks however I can. And, you know, with Pruitt's, with some of the new restaurants coming in, I've played a role to, you know, to help make connections, to expedite any processes where appropriate, or to help track down any information. And lastly, the last activity I wanted to touch on was a grocery analysis that I completed toward the end of 2019. Hopefully, you've all had some time to review that in the booklet that I placed in your office. I did this both to update you, of course, on the economic demand, so that you will be able to update our residents when, as it pertains to grocery stores, but it's also a powerful marketing tool. I think that the map that I provided probably tells the story better than any written words can of where the growth is in our region, where the existing grocery stores are in the region, and where we need a new grocery store. And I'll talk a little bit about new grocery in a minute. So not so much specifically related to the retail recruitment aspects of my position. I classified the next shortlist of activities as community engagement. I've said this to you many times before, perhaps right here at this dais, but I never forget that while I report to Mr. Tarkowski, I work for the residents of our town, and I'm proud of that fact. I went into public service for a reason. I view this activity, though it does not demand nearly as much of my time, I view it equally as important as actually executing the retail recruitment strategy. To that end of keeping our residents updated, I presented to 10 different community organizations throughout the year, including two Citizens Academy classes. I also appeared eight times on radio or television spots. And then again, kind of community engagement. I meet monthly, for the most part, with Mike and Marnie, so that we can catch up on our activities that each of the other two legs are doing, and to share ideas, and then to do the same quarterly with our Quad City Economic Development practitioners, including our friends over at the Yavapai College Regional Economic Development Center. And then lastly, sometimes residents do reach out to me directly with questions, and I'm always happy to give answers and find answers if I don't know them to whatever questions they may have. So looking forward into 2020, I want to just real briefly touch on some of the new businesses that we know will most certainly be opening in 2020. First is the Iron Cask. This will be going into the former Native Grill and Wings. These folks, this is a family-owned gastro pub that specializes in craft beers. So, Marnie, Rhythm &amp; Brews, that is good timing on the Iron Cask's part. We also are welcoming in January both of these restaurants, the Colt Grill. Colt Grill is a cottonwood-based restaurant that's been there for about four years in Old Town Cottonwood. I've just had, I haven't had an opportunity, with Iron Cask being new, to try their food. I've had an opportunity to try Colts', and it's fantastic. They serve barbecue, brisket, smoked meats. They'll be going in for the longer-time residents. You might remember the former Fuddruckers. For folks that have moved here closer to when I did, it would be the space that used to house the Mountain Institute at J.Ted Culinary Institute. So this is right in our entertainment district, near Gabby's Grill. We'll also see the introduction of two Super Circle K's, which I believe everybody is well-aware of. One of them is hoping for a late-January, early-February open over on Navajo and State Route 69. The other one hopes, they hope to break ground this month and be open by April. Again, labor and construction, we'll see if they're able to do that, but that will be over at the southeast corner of State Route 69 in Glassford Hill. And in addition to that Circle K, it'll be complemented and co-located with a Discount Tire, which will be another great addition to the town. The Heights Church had hoped to open in the former Albertson's by this month, but as is, again, so often the case, once, you know, things get backed up, and so right now they're looking at a September 2020 open. This, again, puts a big-box store back into reuse. It also will, every Sunday, inject 1,000 residents into our Central Business District, as well as the myriad of other activities that the Heights Church adds value to the community. And then, again, I mentioned Alliance Hardware and Lumber. I don't have a timetable as far as a target open date yet. I'm hoping to have that next week. So 2020 priorities, especially through the first quarter and beyond. Some of these are continuation of work that I've been doing through 2019 and before. Others of them are new ideas that will start, and almost all of them are likely to go well past Q1, but it will start in Q1. So I told you my push was restaurants and hotels in 2019. In 2020, my push is restaurants. I do not believe we've scraped the tip of the economic opportunity there. Restaurants and the expansion of locally and regionally-owned small businesses. I'll also add to that list grocery, but I'm going to highlight that in a moment. So as it pertains to the restaurants, we've had the location of, the successful location of some new restaurants in 2019, but as I said, I don't think it even scrapes the surface of demand, so I'll continue to work to attract more, especially in the fast casual realm. As it relates to regional and local businesses, I think both Pruitt's and the Colt Grill are excellent examples of regional entities that expanded into Prescott Valley. And if you remember, Lindo, Mexico, over in the Crossroads Shopping Plaza is an excellent example of a Prescott-based business that opened a secondary location here. Most chain full-service restaurants right now are just not in an expansion mode. DoorDash and other delivery services, combined with the continually rapid rise of fast casual restaurants like Chipotle and Mod Pizza, have kind of made full-service chains pull back a little bit. Many are closing stores, so I believe that locally-owned restaurants are the best chance as far as attracting full-service restaurants. Furthermore, stores like Pruitt's have demonstrated that the rapid speed that smaller organizations can move compared to the years-long processes that take place with some large retail chains. I will, of course, keep up to date and in contact with the brokers regarding the national chains, but I think that some of the more regionally-located, I'm thinking, and I have not even reached out to these folks, so no promises, but I'm thinking somebody like a Fries Electronics might have the ability to be a little bit more nimble and move quicker than some of the national folks. I'd also like to set up some full, I'd like to get set up in the first quarter and maybe even execute a couple of them, we'll see, some full brokerage house meetings down in Phoenix. You know, I want to work with my contacts at the very large brokerage houses to piggyback on their company-wide meetings and present an overview of Prescott Valley to their full suite of brokers. So most of my one-on-one meetings to date have been either with a broker who reps a specific retailer, or I'm meeting with the principal of, or two principals of the large brokerage houses down in Phoenix. I've mentioned this, and they have been receptive to the idea, so I'm hoping to get this set up and calendared, if not executed. I feel that this will get some of the smaller fish in the pond, so to speak, by reaching out to the associate brokers and their full suite, and also just, again, expand my network, keep Prescott Valley top of mind for these folks. Grocery recruitment, as I mentioned, I think this is probably the most important and immediately necessary item for me to address through 2020. Shortly after I started in 2016, you may remember that Amazon purchased Whole Foods, and while grocers didn't exactly feel threatened by that move, they did put new construction on hold pretty much across the board, and instead allocated their capital towards their e-retail presence. In short, they didn't want to find themselves in the boat that Sears now finds themselves of trying to play catch-up that will probably never happen as a result of Amazon. But now grocers are slowly beginning to expand again, and I believe we clearly have a demonstrated market demand for a new grocery store. I believe we had that in 2016, but now I think things are starting to align with our demand, grocer expansion, and of course, we have a very strong economy right now. I also would like to, through 2020, find some direction for our former Sam's Club. I do feel that the former Sam's Club's being vacant is a threat to... I do feel that the former Sam's Club's being vacant is a threat to our, the viability of our Crossroads Shopping Center. As I know very well, living in Toledo, blight begets blight. And having a building that has been empty for two years honestly keeps me awake at night. I've touched base with the Walmart Arizona rep last month, and like so many others, he asked me to circle back with him after New Year. I'm going to be tearing up the phone lines next week. Sam's Club is on my list of discussion points with him. Personally, I find Walmart's asking price for that building to be unacceptable and out of step with our market. Their appraisal of 5.8 million cannot possibly take into consideration the difficulty involved in identifying an end user that can backfill 135,000 square feet, and/or the likely need that they would need to subdivide the building and the added cost that that would involve. So I'll update you further once I've touched base with the Walmart real estate rep. And lastly, very similarly to how I provided you with an overview of the grocery analysis, I want to do something similar with its own set of metrics as it relates to our restaurant industry. And so this will, once again, not only act as an educational piece and as something that you, that will help you answering questions from our residents, but also as a marketing tool. I'm in the process of drafting that report now, and I hope to have something for you in early February. So that's what my Q1 looks like and will likely carry into other parts of 2020. And of course, I look forward to coming back and keeping you updated quarterly, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Counselwoman?
Thank you. This was fabulous. This is exactly what we asked for at our goal-setting session, so I appreciate that. And you are very knowledgeable, and I appreciate everything you said. However, correct me if I'm wrong, Councilmember Anderson, sir. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we asked, this is great. This was great for the New Year. I think we asked for a monthly report in writing from all three groups that says exactly what you just did. This is what I did this month. It could be three bullets. It doesn't need to be this detail, just so we know who's opening and what's going on, so that while, when we're out in the community, we can toot your horn. So I think this is great, and this would be great, you know, two or three times a year, this kind of presentation for our residents. But as council members, we ask for a written report once a month from all three jurisdictions, real brief, having to do specifically with economic development. Who you can announce that's coming, who you can announce that you're working with. We don't need to know confidential stuff from you or Michael or Marnie. And those businesses that have been retained by the Chamber, those businesses that have been attracted by Michael, that's what we would like to know on a monthly basis in writing. So this was fabulous. So I really appreciate your time, and if you need help with any of those Realtor meetings, I'd be glad to join you as a council member to say, yes, we definitely want you, because I've done that before.
Excellent. Thank you, Councilwoman. I appreciate that, and I'd be happy to provide a report at any frequency that council requests, although I would encourage you to more look at a quarterly written report as economic development, as you know, is kind of the long game, and I don't think that there'll be an enormous amount to report on month to month, but I am more than happy to provide a report at whatever intervals you would prefer.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Crossman?
Yeah, okay. I have like three questions in one, and then I have a hypothetical question for you. And I've experienced this with other industries. How difficult is it to get someone here to open a business as far as, as far as getting them here to look, and then after they're, after they finally do get here, how successful are you in getting them to basically open up a business after they've come and looked at our community? And for the ones that have said no, what were the obstacles that we could possibly address as a council?
So at least as it pertains to the national retailers, you know, I'll be honest, when I, first when I started this job, I thought, oh, I'm going to go down and I'm going to educate everybody on what awesome things are going on here in Prescott Valley. And what I found very quickly thereafter was that people didn't necessarily need the full education that I thought they would. They were aware of what was going on in Prescott Valley. And so a lot of my role is more giving them that more localized information that is more difficult to gather from other sources, such as new housing starts and whatnot. It's that type of information that usually gets folks interested in the market, enough so that they might want to come up and view it. But again, it's not necessarily, they're not necessarily unfamiliar with it, especially folks that work out of the large brokerage houses. You know, some of the retailers directly might not be as familiar, but the brokerage firms, many of them are already pretty familiar with the town. And so it's, usually if people are coming up here, they already have plans, at least in their mind, whether or not they share them with me, that they're going to locate here. So me getting them here doesn't necessarily mean that they'd open, but when they do come, especially of their own accord, that usually means that they're trending in a direction where they'd like to open. As far as impediments, I would say it just depends on, it very much depends on the retailer. One of our biggest impediments, the same as with industrial, is a lack of building stock. And so if somebody's come up and, coming up and they're looking, like I said, that 1,500 to 10,000 square foot seems to be the kind of the sweet spot that the majority of retailers are looking for, and we just don't have much in that area right now. And the idea of taking on a full Sam's Club to do a 10,000 square foot build isn't usually something that they even want to entertain. So whether or not there's anything that we as a, as a community can do about that, I'm not, I'm not so sure to increase building stock. I mean, there's certainly things that we could take on if we wanted to, but that would not be the direction that I would recommend, at least. I'm trying to think of any other large impediments. You know, the other thing that I hear a lot, and there's just, again, and I don't know if there's much that we can do to address it, but what I hear a lot is that as a region, not necessarily Prescott Valley specifically, but as a region, we've reached full retail potential at this moment. I don't believe that, but I still hear that a lot from, especially from the brokerage community. And so that's what, that's part of that education campaign of, you know, showing them where the growth is relative to our existing stores and that type of thing. To me, that's the best thing to address that concern is education. But there is kind of a general belief in the market that we have reached it for the time being, and that as our population continues to grow, it will trigger more retail growth. I hope I answered those questions.
Yeah, okay. And now my hypothetical. If a, if somebody wanted to put a concession, let's say, now this may have, Larry may have to jump in on this too. If somebody wanted to open up a concession, let's say in Mountain Valley Park to sell hats, shirts, candy, ice cream, something like that, so it would be open, let's say, the same period of time that the pool would be open, and not necessarily at the pool, but at least in the park, would that be something that we could address?
We annually go out for concessionaires for Mountain Valley Park. They need to respond when we do that. And we have a very difficult time going ahead and getting people to sign up to be concessionaires at the park, because we have certain requirements. Now, we're not going to allow someone to go in there and compete with a bricks and mortar store, okay? That's really bad, okay? But when they're selling hot dogs and all at the concession stand or the secondary building, we have a rough time filling those. There is no desire for it. You don't want wandering vendors coming in and selling balloons and t-shirts, and then they disappear. So we can talk about that hypothetical some other time.
Okay, thank you.
I did have one comment also. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I want to piggyback on this whole conversation. I spend too much money in Phoenix, and I resent it. Our businesses down there, and I'll give you the name of one, Home Goods, do they fear we'll cannibalize their store down there if they put that here?
Home Goods, I think, is a viable option for our market. So I think that their concern, so Home Goods is part of the TJX Corporation owned by TJ, TJ Maxx and Marshalls and some of the other suite of businesses. Their concern is more about cannibalizing off of TJ Maxx and their existing assets here, but I know that they have at least taken interest in the market. So really, when it comes to cannibalization, they're, they're usually not concerned about cannibalizing the Phoenix market. It's more about, can our market support their store?
Thank you for that. If we had a Marshalls here, I could understand their cannibalization. But Home Goods, they, they offer way more than TJ Maxx, and we homeowners need that. So I guess it's a mindset, and I don't know what we can all do, but I want those tax dollars spent here.
Ben, could you address that in a two-minute, two-minute discussion about critical mass? I mean, you, you have retailers that know this market better than Ben does, or better than any of us do. They do the research on it. And until you have a certain mass, critical mass, to purchase things, there are certain stores you just won't see here.
That's absolutely correct. And, but to piggyback off that, Home Goods in particular, I believe that we are at that point of critical mass. You know, then it starts to play into, okay, well, are they, can they build a new store? Okay, well, when they build a new store, is it going to, are they, are the sales that they derive from that store worth the high cost of new construction right now? Or is there an existing location for them to go into? And the answer right now is no. So sometimes it's not always, I mean, Mr. Tarkowski's right when it comes to critical mass, certain businesses just will never be viable in this area, at least, you know, in the next foreseeable five years, you know? But some of it too is just that the timing and isn't right either for the company or for the type of real estate that's available.
Even with all the building going on, they still, we haven't reached their numbers, is what you're saying to me.
Correct.
Okay.
Counselwoman?
And I didn't mean to interrupt earlier. I apologize. I know that one of the other impediments that we do also seem to have an issue with would be that we are not near the main hub for transportation and don't offer a railroad. And the only reason why I do bring that up is I used to work for a drywall company that had railroad delivered to Phoenix and then had to do overland trucking. So that is another issue to also consider is our geological location, per se. But I had a question on, was a survey done, or the people that are requesting another grocery, is there an area that they're more interested in having it, let's say, like at 89A area, or are they saying in a different area?
As far as, I mean, ultimately, the market will determine where the best spot would be for a new grocery store. I can say just from a, the two-cent private sector perspective that I'd give, we are commercially underserved on the north side of town. We're commercially underserved on the east side of town. If I was a broker or retailer coming up in the area, I would see the high-speed highway access to Viewpoint in 89A also being located outside of major growing subdivisions as an attractive area. Whether or not that's where they ultimately go, I don't know, but that would be a very market-driven area. The other one would be in our more traditional ring of development on the east side of the town, say, I'm thinking the vacant land over on Country Club and State Route 69 is a very viable option. And again, they may ultimately want a different location in that area, but I think that those are two that would make a lot of sense from traffic access standpoint, from population centered around it, from that standpoint as well.
I was also thinking with the Jasper development coming, that maybe the north side would be a little more desirable for someone like that. I just was wondering on that.
Correct. Though the one thing that I would also point out is, you know, there's an old saying of retail follows rooftops. And so usually the rooftops have to be there first. And as you saw even from the map that I wrote, you know, we, or that I, that I created, we have about 20,000, they're not all residents of Prescott Valley, but 20,000 Yavapai County residents who regularly use Prescott Valley as their main retail node. That would be starting from Fane Road and Points East down to 17 compared to about 9,000 residents on the north side that would encompass Pronghorn, Viewpoint, and Points over to Mingus West and those unincorporated county areas. So I think that the greater demand is likely on the east side.
Okay, thank you.
One of the things, Ben, we talk about, and hopefully the public recognizes it, and I see Mr. Cook out in the, in the audience, and hopefully he captures this as well, is that the challenge here, or the challenge we've seen before is, as great of a public partner that Walmart has been to our community, which has brought a lot to us, they are also ultimately, at the end, hurting us in regards to the Sam's Club building. And although I won't get into details, and you and I have discussed this, but a grocer did want to go into the Sam's Club.
Correct.
They did want to open up a grocery store in the Sam's Club. And who said no?
Correct. Walmart. Walmart has put a restriction on the Sam's Club building to not sell to somebody that they view as a competitor, which they've defined as grocers and other warehouses.
Which is understandable from a business point of view.
Correct.
But from a community where we hear the horror stories throughout the country, where Walmart rolls into a town or a community, puts everyone else out of business, crushes them, and they're the only show in town. I'm not saying that would happen here in Prescott Valley, but they're certainly not opening up an opportunity for Prescott Valley citizens to get benefits.
Correct.
Because we have the smallest Walmart grocery area. It's punishing our citizens. When Fry's is maxed out, Safeway is maxed out, Sprouts is maxed out. Give Prescott Valley from what we've done for them, and they've done for us as well, council needs to get involved. Council needs a voice. They need to let the people know, and the citizens need to understand that, that Ben Hooper doesn't have to be the only voice. They can have voices as well. They can write, they can email, they can call Walmart and say, hey, help us out. I'm confident that another grocery store is not going to put Walmart out of business here in Prescott Valley. And hopefully they understand that. And it's going to take getting loud to just, we got to do something. Because sitting back and waiting for Walmart, they're not in no rush to put something in Sam's Club. It's been, like you said, two years, and I'm sure they'll sit on it for another two or three years, because it's just numbers on a book. So.
Well, and my, my message to Walmart will be, I understand entirely, and it is a very prudent business decision to want to maintain your market share. But if that's the case, then they need to maintain their market share. And that means building new, expanding existing.
And that's, and that's it. I'll get off my soapbox on that. Thank you, Mr.
I'll just add to that. They sell themselves as a community partner.
Correct.
That's where we need to go.
And Vice Mayor, you're absolutely right. So it takes more than one voice. I can't reiterate that enough. We all have voices. They're all loud up here. You need to make that known to Walmart. So that would help, I think, all the citizens that, that we serve.
And when I meet with the Walmart real estate executive, I will see how that, how that meeting unfolds and may have a request of council moving forward.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir. With that being said, we're just burning through the agenda tonight, aren't we?
[laughing]
3B.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Sorry, actually, Councilman Anderson had something.
Ben, first of all, I want to thank you for your report tonight. I appreciate it. Appreciate all the information. And I do have a comment for Councilwoman Hunt about the question you asked Marnie about home-based businesses. As someone who owns a home-based business, I can tell you that I would not be entering my 18th year as a home-based business were it not for the support of the Chamber of Commerce and the, and the business-to-business opportunities that they've provided over those years. It's not as easy as people may think, having to do that business without signs, without the ability of people driving by knowing that you're there. If it weren't for the Chamber of Commerce, we couldn't possibly have done it. So I want to thank the Chamber for that.
And that's awesome, because there are some home basement businesses that do graduate into storefronts, and I know you work on that. So, thank you, sir.
Thanks, Ben.
Thank you.
Moving on, item 3B, Building Bright Futures presentation. The one and only Casey.
Yeah, you can sit down now. We've seen your chart.
Oh, okay.
We couldn't get a stand, so we got you. That's how it works. Nice.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council, thank
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council, thank you for having me here tonight. We're going to liven it up! Yeah! All right. Tonight, we are going to talk about Building Bright Futures, which is our partnership with Humboldt Unified School District to give every first grader a library card. This, I just have to introduce Shannon Shinagel and Lynette Christensen. They are the heart and soul behind this program. They work closely with all the first grade teachers to get this program off the ground. So with that, let's go. So what is this program all about? What is this? What's happening? So last year, we did our community assessment. We received feedback from teachers and parents. There's low reading scores in our district, so we decided to create a special program to target first graders. Reading, we all know, is a foundation for the future of learning. And being able to read by the end of third grade is a crucial milestone in a child's future academic success. So we created this program, Building Bright Futures, to help with these issues, we hope. Again, we worked with Dan Streeter from HUSD, who was wholeheartedly in it to win it with his program. We, of course, worked with the teachers, first grade teachers, to distribute packets. So this was the huge thing. We had to put together a library card applications and information, and it was a tedious process. And these ladies did a great job sending hundreds and hundreds of emails to these teachers as reminders to get those applications into us. So the special library cards is a huge incentive. You pass them around. So when the first grader comes in, I'll show you what we have. So this is the library card. We had a graphic designer design it, Brianna Hinkle, who is amazing. She designed our Building Bright Futures. So their first visit to the library, they get a lanyard. Woo! Their second visit, they get these awesome little bags. And their third is a squishy. I had no idea what a squishy was, but kids love them. They are the trend. They're the hot thing right now. So they're very cheap, but kids love them, and they're going to come to the library to get it. So we are very happy with that. So me, being a librarian, I had to do a lot of research to back this program. Of course, reading scores of first grader students who have library cards are significantly higher than those of non-library card holding first graders. The location of the library and the number of times parents and children visit the library are important. And what's so great about our location is we are surrounded by schools. So that is ideal for our community. And of course, readers are, believe it or not, are made, they're not born. Most kids just don't arrive at a love of reading by watching other people read. That passion results from exposure to a lot of books, the opportunities to explore a lot of variety of interests. And there's no better place to achieve those goals than the library. So it's documented that when you read to your child from the start exposes them to a variety of high-quality books, and you give them the opportunity to explore, they will be more successful in school and as adults. So that's my research. And cards issued. So these are the schools that have participated. Acorn, Coyote Springs, Humboldt, Prescott Valley, Franklin, Granville, Lake Valley, Liberty and Mountain View. We had 402 first graders, and out of those 402, we have 311 library cards that we issued, which is pretty huge for the first year of this program. And what else do I want to say about that?
A big thank you to the friends of the library.
Yes. First and foremost, a big thank you to our friends of the library. This program would not be possible without the funding that they provided for us to buy the library cards, the graphic design and prizes, too, which is huge. And the big incentive, it's an incentive-based program because research says that kids are more likely to go to the library if there's some sort of an incentive. They see the fun, they start a habit. And once you start the habit, you have those readers.
And thank you to the mayor and others who are leading to this set story.
Yes, that's huge. Because again, we model those behaviors in our leaders. So kids see that, and that's very important. So our goals. This is a three-year pilot program. We're going to be working with HUSD to support the improvement of grade-level reading scores, and then we will next year be opening this up to homeschool groups. We'll be looking at the reading scores. Shannon, you wanted to add that the schools that we wanted could not be part of this program if they did not provide their reading scores. So without that data, we can't see if this is actually going to work. So they will be providing the data yearly, and we'll assess the program once the kids take their AZ Merit English Language Arts Assessment. And that's the data where it shows if third graders have improved, our first graders have improved their reading by the time they've got to third grade. So, yes. Yes, yes. Very important. Yeah, no, come in here. Come in here.
So one of the things I was most excited about is Mountain View Elementary has an ELL, English Language Learners, first grade class. 100% of those kids got library cards. The teacher, who is amazing, sat there and helped the parents, who are also English Language Learners, fill out the application during the parent-teacher conferences earlier this fall. So getting those kids to come to the library and bringing their whole families is a huge boon to them as a community, not just for the kids. And hopefully, when they come to get their prizes, the parents will see that we have ELL classes, that we have citizenship classes, that nobody is checking documentation as they walk in the doors. So for me, that was one of the most exciting things that has happened in this project so far.
And the other thing, especially in that area, Tyler from GIS did like a heat map. And the majority of the people there have fines and/or can't use their card. So with this program, in order to erase all those barriers, we are not charging fines for the first graders. So that will allow them to come and use the library. So I'm all about removing barriers. So with that, I know I've droned on. Questions?
Comments starting on the end? No? Councilman Grossman?
Yeah, I just have a quick comment. I heard that you have a reading program to the kids. I will remind you that usually for Read Across America Week, I dress up as Cat in the Hat and I read to the kids. So contact me. I will be more than happy to come and read to the kids.
Lynette, contact Councilmember Grossman.
Vice Mayor?
I want to thank you for opening up this world. I was a farm kid. We didn't even have a school. I went to a Grange, but the books came on wheels to us, and it opened up a whole world. That's what you're doing. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
And our summer reading theme next year is Imagine a Story. We just got our...
My other question would be, do you know about how many of the homeschool children we could reach out to?
Lynette, do you have that number? Is it just, is it like a total... We just did this last year, too.
Yeah, we reached out to them, had a think tank. I don't have an idea on the numbers, but there are a lot.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering.
Yeah, and we have a good relationship with them right now. Lynette has really done a wonderful job reaching out to them, and we do have that data in a database.
I didn't know if it was like 100 to 300, 500?
Oh, we have more than... We think, yeah, it's in the thousands.
There's like three.
Wow.
Yeah.
Awesome. Okay.
Locally, yeah.
Yeah, locally.
That's amazing.
Yeah, we have a lot.
Okay, and then my other question is, do you have a set time period where you have reading to the children?
Oh, our storytimes? We do.
Storytime on Tuesday mornings at 10 o'clock, toddler time on Tuesday mornings at 11 o'clock, storytime on Wednesdays and Thursdays. And then we also have a writing workshop coming up in January, led by our author, who's been published with his grandson, on a series of books. And Read to the Dogs comes on Wednesday afternoon and now Saturday mornings.
That is really popular. So we have kids who come in who have, might have issues reading, and they can read to the dogs. So it helps give them confidence and some structure to, you know, so they can start reading more so on their own.
Great, thank you very much.
And I have one last thing. Are you guys ready? Ready?
Set, go.
This is the quick change. Hold on.
Hang on, everyone. Get ready for this.
We had more people.
Okay, now I'm ready.
But there's nobody here the day after, like, New Year's. Everybody's gone on vacation or sick. So we had like a lot of people that, but they're sick. So Fantomania 2020! So we're very happy to announce Fantomania 2020, which will be in partnership with the Yavapai Free Library District, the Yavapai Library Network, and it will be in the Prescott Events Center, August 8th. You paid for the whole seat, but you only need the edge. So we are very excited to have that. We'll have more to come. We have a lot of meaning. You guys are just got to liven up. We have a lot more. It's in the phases, but we have partnered with other Prescott, or other libraries in the Yavapai Library Network to help us with this huge event. We've outgrown it. Last year was overwhelming for staff. I think people wanted to quit. It was just too much. We outgrew the space here. So we're excited to have it at the event center.
Casey.
Yes, ma'am.
I want to do a council chat and repeat this show.
You got it. You got it. I'll do this for free.
Casey, you're out there crushing it, and I appreciate you and your team doing an amazing job. So just keep up the good work. And for the rest of staff, I expect gifs in all your PowerPoints from now on. If you just work that in, that'd probably be good.
Right, you're the best. We got to make these things. And squishies. All right.
Casey, I have just one question.
Certainly.
Actually, it's a request. Would it be possible for you, not tonight, but to get back to us and give me a list of fines that erode the library?
Yeah.
Thank you.
You got it.
Staff introductions. See what we've got.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This evening, we have Hope Hooper with us, who is our new recreation supervisor for the town of Prescott Valley Parks and Recreation Department. Hope transferred into the position from her arts and culture position. And tonight, she's going to speak briefly about what she does for us as the recreation supervisor and what she has planned going forward.
Thank you, Jason. Thank you for having me tonight. I'm so excited to be continuing to serve our community in a new capacity. So thank you to everybody who helped me to get to where I am. And we've had some great events just this week already. New Year's Eve was wonderful, so thank you for all of you who came and supported us through that. You got to see what Parks and Recreation does. And if you didn't get a chance to go to New Year's Eve, this is me shamelessly promoting Parks and Recreation, please go to Polar Bear Splash this Saturday. I know we'll see you there, Mayor. So it's a great event, it's free, it's what we do for the community. We love being able to, you know, have people come out, meet each other, enjoy the things that we do, see the good side of the town instead of, you know, I'm paying my water bill, I'm going to court this or that, to get to enjoy what we do, like they do at the library. Maybe we'll even join them for Comic-Con this year, we'll see. But it's, we have a lovely team. Marissa, I was going to introduce her this evening. However, she has a manager's meeting for upcoming volleyball season. So she is actually working hard over at the Civic Center right now. So we appreciate her and the rest of the team. We've had a great week, a great month. We're looking forward to an even better 2020. So thank you all for your support and continued support, and we look forward to growing and to having you there along for the ride.
I actually have a statement and a question. You wouldn't know this, but for New Year's Eve, we used to have a ball, a beautiful lit ball that Public Works created. And we don't drop balls in Prescott Valley, so our ball always went up. Where is that ball? Let's find it and have it next year.
I haven't seen it in our storage units, but that doesn't mean it's not still somewhere.
I mean, it was fabulous, and our Public Works guy, we're very proud of it, but it's not being utilized.
Well, and if for some reason we can't find it or it needs repairs, our Parks crews, they're great guys, they're hardworking, they do a great job for us. I'm sure they'd be happy to help get it back in working order if we can find it.
Well, we always got a lot of attention because we don't drop balls.
I don't know what to follow on that. So any other council member have anything? Ms. Hooper, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item 3D, Santa Fe Station Park Construction Update.
So this evening, I was asked to come forth before you and give a progress report on how we're doing over at Santa Fe Station Park. We're moving along at a pretty good pace. As I speak this evening, the park has seen what we'll call a soft opening to this point in time. This is what it looked like just in the summertime before we began work back in, say, July. And as you look at it today, this was this morning, it's an aerial shot from our bucket truck. I didn't have time to get a drone out there, I apologize. You're going to see a new all-weather surfacing road that goes to the well sites, an inclusive playground, four pickleball courts, and some flat work that's been completed. Somewhat of a side-by-side comparison there for you to take a look at.
Thanks.
And then the inclusive playground that we have installed, this is an inclusive playground for people of any shape, size, ailment, ability, you can utilize our playground. And it is fantastic, and it is being utilized constantly at this time. And pickleball courts are very popular in this day and age, and they're getting quite a bit of use. The inclusive playground has been completed, the pickleball courts are complete, the all-weather well-site access road, 60% of the flat work, that's our concrete work that we have, $28,000 worth of it is completed. We just did a PO for another $9,000 worth. It should be completed in the next week or two. The parking lot is complete along with the lights. The grass turf has germinated. You'll see that we still have it fenced off. We're waiting for it to get a little bit more mature before we open it up to the public. It takes some time for that grass to establish its roots, and if we open it too soon, we'll tear it up too soon, and we'll be back out there reseeding it. And we're going to probably do another seeding in the spring, just so that we can make sure that that turf gets good and stable in the ground before we open it up, we're hoping next fall. And the landscape of the common areas, some of the trees are installed and some of the bushes. One thing that we are currently waiting on is power. Power through APS is something that we have been waiting on quite a while. We're hoping, hoping to see the power at the end of this month, maybe beginning of next month. And that would be really important because it looks like our restroom should arrive at the end of this month at the beginning of next month. It's a modular restroom with three family restrooms that is attached to it. We've gone away from the men's and women's now, and we have just family restrooms throughout. They're also all ADA accessible. Since we do have an inclusive playground, we felt that this was very beneficial to have. And the completion of the flat work will be this month. And that is my slideshow. It's not very much, but that's where we stand at this time.
I have one question.
Yes.
When I was on Parks and Rec, I think I remember a future phase, if funding was available, to have the whole playground that spongy surface?
Correct. Right now, it is a mix of concrete, of, gosh, we'll call it spongy, for the lack of a better term at this moment, and then we have Fibar.
Right.
And Fibar is considered ADA, but there are better surfacings available. We are working for grants towards that opportunity.
Here we go. Great job. Can't wait. And I literally just drove down there the other day, and there was about eight people playing pickleball, so we're good.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Nice job. Item 3E, agreement for professional services with CH2M Hill Engineers. Jacobs for Engineering Consulting, Mr. Wadsworth. Ooh, I see also, Mr. Mundelow is here to join us as well.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a joint presentation by myself and John Mundelow. So we wanted to come and talk about a couple... So, we wanted to come and talk about a couple of different tasks that we would like to have Jacobs Engineering do for us at the wastewater treatment plant. So, it's related to water and wastewater. So, I'll talk about the first two, and then John will finish up. If you have any questions, we can answer those. So, we're looking at doing three different things. One is a process flow evaluation analysis at the wastewater treatment plant. The second one is a water system loss audit. And then, the third is a return to sewer ratio determination. And we're proposing to utilize Jacobs to do this. Jacobs obviously operates our treatment plant and our water system, but their engineering branch down in Phoenix is also very familiar with doing work for the town, and they've worked at our treatment plant. They've done work on our water and sewer models, and we've used them ever since we purchased the water system back in 1999. The reason we want to do the wastewater treatment plant flow evaluation, essentially, we have two main meters at the plant, the influent meter and the effluent, basically what's coming in and what's going out. And they don't really agree with each other. And so, we want them to come in and do an evaluation and see if we can get them to at least a little bit closer together. They're about 300,000 or 400,000 gallons apart, or they have been in the past. We have a lot of recycled flows through the plant that are not metered as well. So, we want to come in and have them take a look at everything and determine why the meters were not agreeing with each other. We have done a number of things to get them more closely related to each other, but we really need to know what is the true number. And so, we'd like for them to come in and take a look at that. So, that's one of the tasks. This is just a process flow diagram of the treatment plant. So, the two, the two white circles are the influent meter and the effluent meter, and you can see there's a lot going on in between. And so, you know, some of the flows, because they recirculate, we're double counting them either on the influent meter or we're double counting them on the effluent meter, and we've just kind of got to get all that kind of sorted out so that we know what the true numbers are. So, that was very quick explanation of that item. The next one is a water loss audit, which is essentially an accounting of looking at our water system and determining with how much we pump out of the ground versus how much we sell, have we accounted for all the water? Typically, we have to stay below a 10% loss across the system. That's by the DWR standards. And typically, we're less than that 8% or so. But we really want to get our arms around where our loss is, and as the town grows, we want to make sure that number doesn't expand. And so, we've done some small in-house studies, but we really need a detailed one. We'd like Jacobs to do that for us as well. And so, they'd be looking at the water production meters. They'd be looking at our large commercial meters, because those are very critical to us. And they'd be looking at multiple years of production and sales. And they'd be looking at very fine detail to determine, are we actually having lost water between what we're pumping out of the ground and what we're selling? Or are they what they call apparent losses? In other words, metering accuracies are not, you know, right, or we're, it's data management and how we add the numbers up, and we've got errors in there. So, you know, there's differences between real losses and apparent losses, and they're gonna go in and do a, basically, a fine-tooth comb, looking at all that information to tell us what we're really dealing with. So, that's the second one. And then, the third one, this is the one John's gonna talk about, I believe. So, I'll let John handle it from here.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Final task for Jacobs would be this return flow ratio calculation. And this relates to water rights and applications of certificates of assured water supply. The Department of Water Resources allows the water that's generated by the development to be reapplied back towards the development, so in terms of return flow. So, in our initial run-through this, we made a, I felt, a pretty strong estimate of what the return flow is, but we did not, at that point in time, a couple of years ago, have direct information. So, we calculated a 92% return flow ratio of the water served indoors of the house, making it back to the treatment plant and into the ground through our recharge systems. DWR said, "Oh, that's too high." And so, they kind of set an arbitrary limit of 75%, but they recognized that if we came back with some solid data, they would review that ratio. And it's important, too, because if you look at our total portfolio, over time, it could result in maybe a 300-acre foot reduction in our portfolio, a pretty significant amount. So, we'll have Jacobs look at this. Over the past couple of years, we've installed and have collected data on several lift station flow meters in the wastewater system. So, we have some more direct data. So, they'll look at that, evaluate some of the real conveyance losses that occur within our wastewater system, rather than the supposed or presumed losses that Department of Water Resources came up with, and look at some of the actual residential uses. Finally, just to conclude, overall, we're looking for the three tasks. We have a preliminary appraisal from Jacobs, somewhere in the $80,000 to $120,000 range. We're trying to fine-tune that right now. Of course, pending any comments that you have. Complete this task by the end of the fiscal year. We do have the money for these tasks budgeted in various line items in our budgets.
John, I know you just touched on it, but could you elaborate a little bit more on that sentence where it says, "But staff has not had direct data and ADWR has arbitrarily reduced the estimate to 75% until the town can provide the data?"
Yeah, the, we did not have direct data when we did our initial estimate. And so, over that past 18 or months, or 24 months or so, we have developed that additional data. ADWR set, basically, that 75% was an arbitrary number. And they had some justification, but it wasn't well justified. So, yeah, we want to get that, that number higher and justify it. We believe it to be significantly higher. It may not end up being 92%, but we believe it's significantly higher than the 75%.
So, for people's information in the audience and listening, we think it's 92%, but the state arbitrarily is saying it's 75%. And so, that's why this audit is so important.
That's correct.
Okay. Can we do it sooner than the end of the year?
This will probably be the first task in the list we have, we assign to them. It's only important in the sense of when is the next applicant for a certificate of assured water supply going forward. That's when the ratio would be used, at the next CAWS application.
Thanks, Mayor.
As Chair of Water Groups, I'm bristling, and you're not surprised. I already knew about this. ADWR didn't even have data to base this on, but we have to have data.
Right.
And I'm saddened that communities like ours are being held hostage by a state agency. And that will get me into all kinds of problems, but it's a fact, it's a truth, and my job chairing those groups is to protect the members in this group, and that's what I'm trying to do right now. I'm willing and ready to challenge the arbitrary percentage. Our town should not be suffering like this. Do we want to be accurate? Absolutely. We work really hard at it. And I want that fact to be reported.
I think that's exactly what we're doing. I think we came in with a guess, the same as they came in with a guess, and now we're gonna come in with an accurate number. So, I think it's appropriate that we do have accurate numbers available to us. And I know it's being forced upon us, but I think we need to have that number available to us. I don't think we can, we can go in with anything short of 100% information, and I think now we'll have it, and I think will be justified in the approach that we used originally.
I don't disagree with the thing you said, but what I have a problem with is if they didn't base it on any data, will they ever accept our hard work and our data? That's what I'm concerned about.
There's nothing else, sir. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir.
Nice job. I like this guy right here. He's just charging up here. He's racing. He wants to get this done. Owner-occupied housing rehabilitation, 3F.
Thank you. Be just a minute here. I'm continuing our PowerPoint fest tonight. Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. I'm Gary Davis with Community Development Department, and one of the things I do is manage our owner-occupied housing rehabilitation program. And that's a program that helps owner-occupied households in the town make repairs that they wouldn't necessarily be able to afford on their own, and also helps us shore up our housing stock, one house at a time, across the town. And I wanted to come here tonight for a couple of reasons. Number one is, some of you might not be familiar with this program. Wanted to give you a little overview of how it works. And also, wanted to put the word out there, because we do have some money available from the grant funds that we've received, that if anybody's interested in having a project at their house, this might be good information for them. So, information on our funding sources, most of our funding comes from home funds, from HUD, federal money, goes to the state, and state contributes some Housing Trust Fund money, and that comes to us from ADOH, the Department of Housing. The totals, a couple of years ago, we got a total of $275,000, which we did rehab on seven houses. Last year, we did, we got a grant for $385,000. We expect to be able to do eight houses with that. And just this fall, we got word that we got a grant for another $341,000. And we also got some additional funding from Foothills Bank, which gives us a little leverage funding. So, thank you, Foothills Bank. I believe we might have a representative of Foothills Bank here to receive our thanks on that. And I wanted to emphasize again, a lot of that money is still available. We've started on those projects, but a lot of that money is still up for grabs and not spoken for. So, hopefully, everybody within the sound of my voice, if you know somebody or if you have a home that could be in need of repair, this program might be for you, and you can certainly apply for that. History of the program, we started out in 1999. Since then, we've received and redistributed more than $3 million in grant funds, and that has gone to more than 85 households across the town. Eligibility, any house in, or mobile home in Prescott Valley in the town limits, where the owner lives there full-time, and the household income is less than 80% of the median household income in the county. And also, the home value is less than 95% of the county median value. Those are our parameters that are set by the state grant funds for us to continue the program. And also, that the owner is current in paying their mortgage and taxes and homeowner's insurance. What types of things can we do? Well, we can do mainly health and safety issues, electrical, plumbing issues, things to bring the household up to codes, structural items, roofs, walls, floors. We've done all these kinds of things, including rain gutters. And energy-efficient items, too. Windows, heating, insulation, air conditioning improvement, bringing people's heating bills down and use less energy. And also, some disability adaptations. A lot of our homeowners are older or have disabilities. We can put in ramps, grab bars, et cetera. We have $65,000 maximum now that we can spend on each individual house, and if we do a mobile home replacement, which is also possible, we can go up to $90,000 per project. How it works is a homeowner just submits an application to us. We check for eligibility based on those criteria I was talking about, and set the applicants in order of priority. If a household has older occupants or minor children, or has some pretty immediate issues, then they go to the top of the priority list. Our town inspectors will go out and do an inspection and list all the issues that need to be corrected. We'll take that list and put it out to bid, where we'll get bids from licensed contractors. And we collect the bids, and the homeowner and the town select a contractor and starts a construction contractor with the homeowner. The homeowner also signs a document that creates a forgivable loan, which is secured by a lien. That forgivable loan means if you stay in the house as the owner occupant for five years, 10 years, 15 years for the more expensive projects, then the loan is forgiven after that point. They don't have to pay back any part of that. Completion usually takes place within 60 days. And then, after that five or 10 years or 15 years is up, that recapture period is over, the loan is forgiven, and the lien is released. Now, sometimes, people have to sell the house earlier than they had planned. It happens. In that case, they would have to pay back a prorated portion to the town of that amount out of the proceeds of the sale. Very simple to apply. You can print out an application from our website online. You can pick up an application here at the Civic Center on the second floor in Community Development. Or you can give me a call at Community Development to have an application mailed to you, and you can fill it out and bring it in at your leisure. For more information, whether you're a homeowner or whether you're a contractor who's interesting, interested in possibly bidding on this, these types of projects, you can give me a call at Prescott Valley Community Development at 759-3058. That concludes my presentation, unless there are questions.
How are we marketing this?
Well, by making presentations to council. I also hope to get some more newspaper articles done. We've, in the past, had interviews with homeowners who've had successful projects, and we also have had blurbs go out in the town news announcing this. So, we market it however we can, but word of mouth works really great, too.
And it's on the website.
It is on our website.
One of the things I think we have to approach this in a multi-prong attack with, I think we should definitely look into getting Yavapai County Contractors Association involved in this. Maybe they can take a proactive approach, because if a contractor knows, if they go to a home residence and say, "Hey, I can maybe fix this wall. Let's try to get you some funding," that would probably be a good route. And I know San Diego's a great community partner.
Right. We've reached out with them, yeah.
And also, as a, going around code enforcement, when we have our guys responding to the flags throughout the community, maybe they can be proactive and check out some neighborhoods and just, we put something in their mailbox or put something in their front door and say, "Hey, have you looked at this?" Because a lot of people that need this aren't on the internet, and they're certainly not watching us tonight right now.
Right, right.
So, we need to figure out a new way to get this out there.
That's true, and a lot of the issues aren't visible from the outside, too.
Right.
Things that are on the inside that need to be spruced up, but that is a good approach.
And we may just want to target mail certain areas or blanket mail it, because I'm sure, heck, I'm sure there's some police officers here in the audience that can probably pick a few streets that we could burn up all this money on.
Sure.
All at once, so, thank you.
Do you utilize the senior center to make a presentation?
I have not done that yet.
These people know one another. They know who is in need. Please do not hesitate to contact them.
Great. That's a great suggestion. Thank you.
Great opportunity, though, and just keep up the good work with this.
Thank you.
Moving on, item 3G, Sergeant Kaufman. Come on down.
Mayor, Council, Town Manager, Ivan. Thank you for having me tonight. And Diane Russell-Sullivan. Pleased to meet you. I like that I was introduced by the mayor. My name is Jason Kaufman. I'm a sergeant with the Prescott Valley Police Department. I work for the greatest police department in the state of Arizona.
Yeah!
And the greatest town, and we got the greatest council that supports us, better than any other council I've ever heard supporting a police department. So, with that, I'm gonna talk to you all tonight about the Criminal Investigations Division, whom I work for, under Lieutenant Scott Stebbins, under Chief Rozier.
Sergeant Kaufman, just so you know, the microphone- Sergeant Kaufman, just so you know, the microphone makes your voice loud all by itself.
You could not resist. But everybody at home watching on TV will appreciate it when you get to them.
The mayor and I go way back. We used to work patrol together.
Yeah, we can tell.
Sergeant Kaufman drove a limo for me one evening, too.
That's true.
He's got many talents.
Trying to learn how to work that.
She's trying to find my number.
Among the others.
There, installing the driver software.
Almost there.
We are. So, here we go. You need a copy of this?
Yes, please.
Here you go, this copy. So, like I said, my name is Jason Kaufman. I'm a sergeant with the Prescott Valley Police Department. In about three weeks, I'll get my 20-year plaque.
Yay!
So, I'm going to talk about the Criminal Investigations Division of the Prescott Valley Police Department. It's made up of three separate sections, one being the General Investigations Section, the second section being the Special Victims Unit, and the third section being the Partners Against Narcotics Trafficking, formerly known as the Prescott Area Narcotics Task Force. So, the mission of the Criminal Investigations Section of the Prescott Valley Police Department is committed to truth, justice, and healing of victims of crime through professional and proactive community service. Our job is to help people make a difference in this community that we love and we live in and we raise our families in. This is what the tree looks like with regards to who supervises it. Lieutenant Stebbins over General Investigations. You have Sergeant Tom Grant. He has five detectives assigned to him. And then, you have Special Victims Unit. That's my group. I'm in charge of the Sexual Assault Response Team and the Victim of Crime Act, which is known as the Special Victims Unit. And then, you have the Partners Against Narcotics Trafficking. That's led by Sergeant Martin, and facilitated by the Yavapai County Sheriff's Office. Right now, there's currently a vacant detective position in there. So, we got to fill it with a detective eventually, when we have more people. So, Detective Monchinsky, Detective Field, Detective Holryne, Detective Wilson, Detective Spriggs report to Sergeant Grant. They are specialized detectives in everything. We don't have robbery, homicide. We don't have burglary. We don't have fraud. They learn how to do everything. As Mayor Palgood can attest to, as the former detective sergeant, they really do everything. They have to be cross-chained in everything, and how to interview suspects from every walk of life, in every age group, from forensic interviews to basic read-interview interrogation techniques. Our detectives are also trained members of the Arizona Child Abduction Response Team. They work closely with the FBI and the United States Department of Homeland Security. And we have one certified terrorism liaison officer that's assigned to detectives, and two more that are assigned to the police department. Detectives work closely with the Yavapai County Attorney's Office for obvious reasons, to prosecute felonies, the town of Prescott Valley Magistrate Court, and with other investigators from other jurisdictions, because we all know that crime has no jurisdiction. Bad guys go to and from different states, towns, and cities all over the state of Arizona. Our detectives are on-call 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days per year, including Christmas and every holiday in Kwanzaa. We will respond and roll on anything. We also have a computer forensic investigator. He's actually listed as a detective, but his primary responsibility is computer forensics and phones. Detective Monchinsky possesses all the equipment you could possibly need to download computers, phones, tablets, you name it, he can do it, which is very crucial in this day and age with technology and the way people hide things and incriminate themselves in their databases, as well as their networks. With the special software and equipment that Monchinsky has, which has been funded through various grants, including the Sexual Assault Response Team grant, and grants that have been afforded to us by the Secret Service, United States, and the FBI, Detective Monchinsky is able to help all these agencies that I've listed here, from Yavapai County Sheriff's Office, to the United States Homeland Security Department, the Federal Bureau of Investigation. Most agencies in Yavapai County, as well as Mojave County, he has assisted. He's examined 175 devices in 2019. Now, when you examine a device, it's not like a television show. It doesn't get done in 60 minutes. It could take days, depending on how much data is on this. If they actually made a real TV show on what we actually do, nobody would watch it. It's approximately 85% paperwork, 15% fun. But the real fun comes from our hearts. We get to help people make a difference by holding these bad guys accountable. And we get to go home and sleep in our nice beds and know that our community is safer for it. Monchinsky's work has equated over 1,000 work hours for the year of 2019. That's a lot of work hours. He's downloading a lot of phones. So, obviously, because that happens, it takes away from one of the detective positions at the station. But Detective Monchinsky still maintains an on-call rotation position, and still responds to calls if service is needed as part of his job. This job is obviously important for successful prosecutions of various cases throughout the state of Arizona, and especially in the town of Prescott Valley. So, to move on, Special Victims Unit, that's my group. It's funded by two separate federal grants. The Sexual Assault Response Team is a three-year grant. It's a 75-25 split. $599,999 is funded by the United States Department of Justice. Because it's a 75-25 split, the town funds $198,000. That's the town contribution. That pays for three full-time jobs and overtime, as well as equipment and resources needed to accomplish our duties and goals. And then, I also supervise the Victim of Crime Act grant, which is a three-year grant. That's an 80-20 split. $338,000 is paid by the United States Government Department of Justice, and the town contributes $83,000. The grant pays for two full-time positions and overtime. Both grants are, like I said, issued by the United States Department of Justice and facilitated by the Arizona Department of Public Safety. So, we answer the Department of Public Safety, who enters the Arizona Department of Justice. That's the way it works. Special Victims Unit. I have two detectives assigned to me, Detective Alens and Detective Mathis. Alens specifically works in sex crimes, sex crimes against adults and sex crimes against children. Detective Mathis specializes in child abuse and domestic violence. But like I said before, our detectives can do anything. They can do general investigations as well as sexual investigations. And then, I have a Sexual Assault Team victim liaison. Her name is Laura Mant. She provides resources to victims that have been sexually assaulted, as well as victimized, both children and adults. And then, I have administrative assistant Michaela Gill, who's amazing and awesome. And she provides all my monthly reports, all my quarterly reports, which the DOJ requires, as well as my Musker report at the end of the year, a total culmination of all the activities that the Sexual Assault Response Team and the Special Victims Unit has done to justify why we need this money, why we need these police officers to hold these people accountable. And then, I have the Victim of Crime Act. I have two personnel assigned to that specific group. I have Casey Graber and Javier Martinez. Those two provide resources for every victim in the town of Prescott Valley, every single police report that comes in, whether it be a shoplifting, an identity theft, a fraud, a robbery, a burglary. They provide resources and help to help these people rebuild and fix their life to the best they can. And these grants allocate us money so we can help these people put new windows on their houses, new door locks, new windshields on their car, whatever they need. We try to afford them that opportunity to get those things that they need so they can function. And then, we have the Partners Against Narcotics Trafficking Task Force. I was a part of this for three and a half years. Really great group, really proactive group. The mayor was also a former Pant detective. He can attest to the activities involved in that. These guys do a lot. They travel around the county. Their job is to arrest drug dealers, hold them accountable, and seize their property, especially the property that was allocated and bought with drug money. They provide law enforcement across the entire county. And if something's developed, obviously, in the state, down in Phoenix, and they can determine that the drugs are coming up from Phoenix, in some cases, they're allowed to chase after the middleman that comes from the cartel. This organization's been around since 1988. The Prescott Valley Police Department, I will proudly say, has been a part of it since 1988. These are specific cases that we've done, specifically covering 2019. So, for General Investigations, Sergeant Grant's group reviewed cases. He's reviewed 2,050 approximate cases for 2019. Some of these cases are carried over from years. We have victims that have been victimized, suspects have been undetermined. We have DNA. DNA is, like I said, not spun in 60 minutes like some of the TV shows show. It could take months and years, depending on the severity of the crime. And the Arizona Department of Public Safety Crime Lab does that for us. Depending on how major the crime is, that really determines how long we're going to have to wait for the stuff to come back. Current open cases, we have 133 open felony cases. This year, Sergeant Grant's squad closed 506 cases. They made 55 arrests and wrote 1,606 reports. Quite a bit for five people. So, our cases, open cases, we have 390 open cases. Obviously, that carries over from years prior, depending on victims and evidence and stuff being analyzed by the lab. Assigned reports, in 2019, I've assigned 189 reports to two detectives and other detectives that are assisting from General Investigations. We've closed 57 reports and made 14 felony arrests. We submitted 19 reports to the county attorney's office. We served 30 search warrants. We've conducted 17 forensic interviews. We verified 135 sex offenders. Now, we only have about 82, 83 sex offenders in the town of Prescott Valley, but there's different protocols for doing verifications on sex offenders that reside in Prescott Valley. Depends on whether they're a Level 1, 2, or 3 sex offender. Sex offender arrested, five, for violation of their release conditions. And during proactive police operations, which we do, we don't just wait for things to come in. We actually go after people. We've conducted several operations and resulted in 15 felony Class 2 arrests on people. And then, in my vocal people, they have 1,307 open cases, which they're helping people with to make a difference in their life. And the Pant trafficking stats. They've conducted 470 investigations in Yavapai County. Approximately one-third of those are in Prescott Valley. They served 133 search warrants, and they arrested 207 people for drug dealing. And that's me. Do you have any questions?
Councilman? Councilman Grossman? Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm remembering when I first met you, and we were out doing block watch. Thank you for your growth. Thank you for this team. It's disheartening to hear all of this on one hand, but to see the end results balances that all out. Thank your entire team and every single officer for their commitment and their compassion.
Thank you. I will.
Before I grab my soapbox, go ahead, sir.
These Pant arrests, does that include a lot of these I-17, I-40? Is that together? Or is that just DPS?
That's within Yavapai County. So, Yavapai County is approximately 5,000 square miles. It goes from Seligman all the way to Black Canyon City, and then up to Coconino County, and down to Maricopa County through Wickenburg. So, yeah, that includes those arrests within the jurisdiction of Yavapai County.
Councilman, you have anything else? Sergeant Kaufman, you are a very competitive person, much like myself.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to pose a little quiz to you right now, real quick, okay? What is Oro Valley, Buckeye, Florence, Gilbert, Morana, Surprise, Sarita, San Luis, Scottsdale, and Maricopa? What is the relationship to them to us? And it's okay if you don't know the answer.
About size. They're about the same size. Our police departments are roughly the same size as ours.
Roughly, with a couple exceptions. But they're ranked 1 through 10 for safest community in Arizona. We're number 11.
Yeah.
I think we can get lower.
I think we can, too.
Right?
Yeah.
We can absolutely just battle through and crush it.
I agree.
So, with that being said, council supports you and the police department the best way we can. And one of the things being, and I'm sure you'll agree, is, just on a side note, your investigators respond out to crime scenes daily, weekly, nightly, doesn't matter when.
Doesn't matter when.
They're going out there.
Yes, we are.
We need to be able to give you the tools necessary to do a crime scene investigation as quickly as possible.
Absolutely.
And where I'm getting at with that is, back in the day, when I was in your position, we had take-home cars.
Yep.
We had detectives that lived in Prescott.
Yep.
We had crime scenes that occurred where victims would go to Prescott hospitals.
Yep.
And they would respond from their home, in their detective vehicle, to the hospital.
Correct.
And I feel that time is of the essence. And now, some of those detectives are now having to respond back to the station, get their patrol vehicle, which is basically their office.
Yes.
And then, go to the hospital and meet a victim.
And as you know, we don't have a Level 1 hospital here. If we have a gunshot wound or we have some victim, they need to be flown to Phoenix. We need to go down to Phoenix and follow up with the investigation. We had a burned victim the other day. They got burned up in her house, and she was flown down to Phoenix. And we sent people down to Phoenix to look into what happened.
So, what I'm getting at is, I want you to know that, at least the support of me, I can't speak for the rest of council. But when it comes down to budget, which is coming up, whether we need to put some line items in there for vehicle maintenance, some extra gas for these detectives to respond to and from their home, you 100% have my support on that. Chief, you're back there, 100%. I will not argue it. The money needs to be there. We need to be able to respond in a timely manner with no delays, because if it can affect one arrest, that's enough.
I agree.
If we lose one prosecution because we didn't get there in time, or we had detectives that were shuffling cars around or doing something other than what their job is.
Time is of the essence.
They need to do that. And I want you to know that.
Thank you, sir.
That's just a comment, and I hope staff listens and understands that it's not that big of a deal, vehicle-wise, that we as a town give you guys the tools needed. So...
Thanks, sir.
With that being said, I'm getting off my soapbox.
Appreciate it. Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you.
Mr. Grossman?
Thank you.
Ms. Leinoy?
You don't want me to start.
Oh, of course I do. I love hearing you speak. Mr. Anderson?
I want to be the first to congratulate you on 20 years.
Thank you, sir. It's been an honor to serve. I truly mean that.
You're not going to call my name?
Ms. Schumacher?
I just want to say thank you for the toughest job you guys must face, that a person in their time of need doesn't even know what they need at that time. And I just want to thank your whole department for being there as a support system as well, because a victim gets re-victimized just in having to relive what happened. So, thank you all for, the entire department, for what you guys do. It's a really tough job, and I'm really appreciative. And I do speak on the toll. All of the council that I do know that we all do back you up 100%. So, thank you for the job you do.
It's our pleasure.
Sergeant, thank you. And I think we're saving the best for last. Is that a possibility?
Definitely the best for last.
Ms. Traces Gordon?
Thanks, ma'am.
Yay, Traces.
Mine is very short and sweet.
Well, then, why did they punish you?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. How are you this evening? Everyone still awake? Okay, we'll make this short and sweet.
I like this.
And I'll figure out how to use this thing. I'm Traces Gordon, and I am the supervisor over Support Services section. And we have a very small but mighty unit. Currently, there's only four of us. And we're hoping to add another person. Between myself, Jerry, Evelyn, Bruce, and Jody, we have 138 years of police experience. That's a lot. So, a bunch of us are old. That's a lot, so, a bunch of us are old. Okay, so Lieutenant Reese is our supervisor, we're currently filling another position, and we oversee numerous, can y'all hear me okay? Numerous events and activities, recruiting, testing, background investigations, hiring of all personnel for the police department, that's officers and civilians. We do all the media releases for the police department, Jerry Ferguson has done a majority of them, now I'm starting to help. All of us, with the exception of Bruce, who's due to be trained, will be public information officers. So, we do radio and TV appearances as well, we do non-emergency police reports, and we do a whole bunch of community events. Some of us work New Year's Eve, that's why I'm hoarse, okay? So every year, we do over 100 background investigations in our unit. We process all write-along requests, we do contractor background investigations, you name it, we do it. We coordinate over 50 community events per year, it's actually close to 70 now, I was recalculating the other day, and we often adjust our schedules to weekends and evenings. As you know, you'll see us at various events. We do crime prevention education, that includes Block Watch, our Business Watch program, we're kicking up again, and also SEPTED, which is Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. It's a pretty unique science, I first learned about it in the 80s, and it's very proactive community policing for businesses and for residents, but mostly businesses. We facilitate numerous events, educational, and also do a lot of in-house trainings and academies, thanks to our new training room. Coffee with a Cop, we do 12 of those a year, one per month, cops and kids, where we show up at the schools, we do nine per year. Badges and Bobbers, held during now Gold Fever days at Fane Park, we just did the Flying High Turkey Drive with Marnie. Shop with a Cop, we help facilitate that, and when it's in our jurisdiction, we really help facilitate that. I worked on that for five years at Prescott PD, and that's a big job. The Bike Rodeos, we help out our traffic division as they request help from us for their grant. Fuel of Dreams, we just did for Special Olympics at Fry's. I'm trying to remember how much we raised, it was around $1,500. Trunk or Treat, we just did at the Event Center with the Chamber, we ran out of candy in about an hour, so we need to rethink that, and we bought 50% more than we had last year, so I think we'll triple that for next year. Just worked New Year's Eve fireworks, Jody could not be here, she lost her voice also. We were out there for three hours. We figured about 450 people initially, we ran out of supplies, we figured between 500 and 600 people showed up this year, so. Puente de la Comunidad, we also worked on that, we had a lot of fun working on that event. The Back to School Nights, we do that, we host town hall meetings, and especially things that help bridge the gap with our Hispanic community. We partner with various agencies as requested, such as our food bank. School, Christmas, holiday events, we just did a Winter Wonderland at a school, and pretty much anything else that is requested of us. Project Lifesaver, I'm not sure if y'all are familiar with that. Jerry is the majority, takes care of the majority of that program, and we back him up. And basically, it's a bracelet that's applied to someone who wanders, and we have a tracker system, it's kind of like a handheld radar, so that's a wonderful free program to our residents, and Jerry just told me today he's ordering two more bracelets. We have, last count, I think nine of them are out right now with residents. We have our Citizens Police Academy, some of you have attended, I think Ms. Schumacher, Mr. Packard, who else here, anybody else? Mr. Grossman, have all attended that, it's a good program, and it's eight weeks long now, three hours per night, 35 attendees per class, we supply snacks and notebooks, and it's pretty exciting, some of it's very interesting, especially the virtual shooting. I think it's really fun, you can kind of see what our police officers go through. Youth Academy is one of our newer programs, it's held in the summertime for one week, seven hours a day, and 14 to 18 years old. We cap it at 15 students because it's a lot to supervise, okay? We feed them, and they have tapeworms, they're very hungry, we provide notebooks, okay? And they also get state-certified in first aid. Block Watch program is booming, Evelyn is in charge of our Block Watch program now, and she's done a fantastic job. National Night Out is a year-long project, it is the motherload of Block Watch, occurring at the first Tuesday in August, and we coordinate with every department of the town, and everyone that works for the town is invited to attend. I know all of you have participated, it's a wonderful event, and preparation is year-long for this. And in conclusion, for a small unit, we wear lots of hats, we are the face of the department and the liaison between our police department and the community, and we embrace that opportunity, and it's a pleasure. Any questions?
One of the things, ma'am, and what we talked about getting, being a safer city and town is right up your guys' alley, you're getting the Block Watch programs going, and I can't say there's, I mean, we can't have too many of those, you know, so taking that proactive approach is gonna get us that goal and get us lower on that list, so I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I'm just sad this room wasn't full, to hear all of you, no.
It is full.
Kaufman is here, of course it's full. This was valuable, and I hope those at home watching will tell their neighbors what they learned, they can be your ambassadors.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that.
Anything else? Ma'am, thank you for your time, thanks for sticking it out.
Thank you very much, good evening.
Have a good night. With that being said, we're done.